And it is 9:06 a.m. So our consideration of update on COVID-19 is the item and Dr. Pace, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everybody. This is the COVID update for Lake County, and we are continuing to see quite a bit of improvement in the transmission of the virus and the case rates in the county. And mainly today, I'm going to talk a little bit about the variants, but the main issue we're going to be talking about is the vaccine rollout. But maybe Sarah can start with sort of the data and kind of the update on where we're at, and then we'll go into these other things.
Good morning, everyone. I just have a quick update, and like Dr. Pace said, continue to see similar trends that we reported on last week. In California, testing remains relatively high, though the 14-day average has decreased. The good news on the rate is that we continue to see a decline in testing positivity, down to 5.8%, previously at a high of almost 15% just a couple or about a month ago. We continue to see the dramatic decline in new infections statewide. Just about 10,000 new cases were reported yesterday. This dark blue line is our 14-day average, and we can see that it's declining rapidly. We've bent the curve on the number of COVID hospitalized patients statewide. You can see this is down to about 12,000 COVID hospitalized patients yesterday, and the 14-day average declining following that. Just wanted to highlight locally what we're seeing, that same curve. This is looking at the number of hospitalized patients that were COVID-positive in Lake County. So again, you can see the peak, up to about 15 or 16 people were COVID-positive and hospitalized in Lake County just a couple of weeks ago, and here you can see the decline. This does not include people who are hospitalized out of county, but I think this is a good indicator to look in county and the impact on the hospitals. Now, just a quick look at the ICU capacity. So the number of COVID-positive ICU hospitalized patients, there were about 3,300 yesterday statewide, and you can see that we're starting to have an increase in our ICU capacity statewide. All five regions that the California Department of Public Health designated are seeing increased ICU capacity. And then here, just wanted to show Lake County ICUs. Again, you can see a couple of folks positive in the ICU beginning in November, the increase to our peak just a couple of weeks ago, and then the decline here. We've started to see a decrease statewide in the number of new deaths, about 1,500 new deaths statewide over the last week in California. So today, the state will announce the new tier designation for all the counties, and we, Lake County, will remain in the purple tier, which indicates widespread transmission, and it has declined slightly from last week. So the daily case rate for this time period will be 18 per 100,000 population, and the testing positivity declined slightly to 6.8%. Here's the Epi-curve in Lake County. This is looking at the number of new cases per week. So in the last seven days, we've identified about 105 new cases. Just a reminder, a couple of weeks ago, I was reporting nearly 300 new cases, bringing our total case count to almost 2,900, about 107 active cases. And in the last seven days, we've had three additional, we've identified three additional COVID deaths, bringing our total to 36. This blue bar for, pardon me, this purple bar for the week of January 24th to the 30th is the week of our tier designation, that will be announced today, and again, will remain in the purple tier. And then just briefly, we've, Lake County, about 10% of Lake County residents have received at least one COVID vaccine dose. That's about 6,700 people, and that's up from about 900 last week. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. So a couple of things to point out there. One is, is that for us to get to the red tier, we will need, there's something like 90 current cases per week, and we need to get under 43 for two weeks in a row to get to the red tier. So we still have a ways to go, but it's a definite improvement, and we're heading in the right direction. The other thing about this is the schools, even if we're in the purple tier, the elementary schools are able to reopen if we're under 25 cases per 100,000 for five days in a row, and we've met that, we've met that metric now. So the elementary schools that feel prepared to open up are able to do so from the state point of view. And then a couple of other just quick thoughts. One is, is, you know, we're seeing significant improvement here. It's looking a lot better after the holidays, but with the Super Bowl weekend this past weekend, it's possible that some of the gatherings may cause a bump, hopefully not nearly like it was Thanksgiving and Christmas, but that's something to think about. And the other thing is the variants that are out and about, and I want to talk about those a little bit because you're probably seeing quite a bit about that in the news. The main variant we're concerned about in the United States now is called B.1.1.7, and this is the one from Britain, the United Kingdom, and it seems to be spreading quickly around the United States. There are cases in California, mainly in the San Diego area, but it does seem to be spreading. It seems to be much more contagious than the old version and potentially more dangerous. So we're just getting more information about it, but the thinking is, is that potentially within six to eight weeks, this is going to be the predominant variety in the United States. It's replicating so quickly. There are some other ones, one from South Africa, one from Brazil, that were first identified in those places. We're not really seeing those in California yet. These are the ones that seem to not be responding as well to the vaccine. So, you know, a lot of questions about all this, but it does seem to be changing fairly quickly. The only one that has been identified in Lake County is one that they're not even terribly concerned about. They call them either a variant of concern or a lesser level of concern is a variant of interest. And the one that's turned up in Lake County, they're calling it variant of interest. It has some of the changes in the spike protein that we worry about, but it hasn't really been proven to be particularly worrisome at this point. But I think the main thing about this is for people to be aware, it is spreading around the United States. It does seem to be more contagious, and some of them are more contagious, and some of them are potentially more dangerous. So it causes us to not, you know, rest on our laurels and just relax and go back to normal life yet until we understand these things better and until we get more people vaccinated. So let's talk about the vaccine, because this is going to, this is really the solution to a lot of these things, is getting more and more people vaccinated. Like Sarah pointed out, we've got about 10% of the Lake County population vaccinated at this point. There's about 50,000 people in Lake County that are age 18 and over, so who would be eligible for it once their tier comes into place, and we've got about, you know, almost 7,000 out of the 50,000 now done. So we're making progress, but it's much, much slower than we would like, and we're mainly limited by supply. This last week, they gave us, they allocated us 1,000 doses. It has not arrived yet, which hopefully it arrives today. We are, we have about 500 doses left in county that will use up by the end of the day tomorrow, probably. So, you know, we're basically getting it out as quickly as we get it, and as long as the state keeps sending them the vaccine, we'll be able to keep providing it. When the supply dries up, then we're going to have to push the pause button. We're basically, in terms of the appointments, we're trying to line up the appointments with the amount of vaccine we get. So once we get the allocation, we start setting up the appointments, working on those, and then once it actually arrives, we'll open up the appointment link so that people can start making appointments. So when you try to get on and you can't get on because there's no more appointments available, there's nothing else to do at that point. We don't have any vaccine in the county to actually set the appointment up for, so you just have to try back again in a couple of days. Right now, we have appointments open, well, the link is open for today and tomorrow, and that's all the vaccine we have. Hopefully, we get this supply in today, and we can open up for Friday, Saturday, and then next Monday. So the tier system, this is the way we're trying to help the right people get to the front of the line, and an extremely imperfect system. We're working off of the state recommendations. At this point in Lake County, the 1A phase, which is mainly the healthcare workers, the nursing homes, the emergency workers, those kind of folks, they're pretty much been offered all the vaccine, and the ones that wanted it have gotten it. Many of them have gotten a second dose. At this point, we have about 1,000 people that have gotten second doses as well, and so are completely vaccinated. The teachers in the K through 12 staff have all been offered vaccine as well, and the ones that wanted it have gotten it. I think they're somewhere between 16, 80% of the teachers and staff have accepted it. So we're now focusing on the elders. Also, just to say, with the educators, we did not include the childcare and preschool or the college, because that adds, that's a big group of people that would need vaccination, and the colleges are currently not open and are pretty much able to do most of what they do remotely. And most of the childcare and preschools have been able to be open, and there's been pretty minimal outbreaks in those settings. The younger children tend to not be as likely to get the virus or to transmit it to the adults or to have outbreaks. And so we've been kind of letting those folks be so that we can focus on the elders. The state and locally, there's a lot of interest in helping to address the health disparity question, the concerns about the higher number of cases in the Latino community and the Native American community, we've talked about here before. And there's getting to be a big push to try to focus on these two communities to help them get vaccinated so that we can prevent the hospitalizations and death that seem to occur with that. The Native American community has had pretty good access through tribal health. Tribal health has a separate supply of vaccine through Indian Health Service, and so those folks have been taken care of. The Latino folks are not so much, you know. We're just trying to sort through the data, so we don't have good data yet, but the groupings that we focused on, the Latino population tends to be underrepresented in those, so I suspect we're going to find fairly low numbers of them. So there's, we're starting to try to get a strategy to focus on the farm workers and some of the other essential workers in the Latino community to get those folks vaccinated, because we think a lot of what's happening is they're out working and bringing home to their families, and that's where the issue is. So that, they're going to become another focus here in the next week or two in terms of the vaccine prioritization. So again, you know, well, one other thing about this is that we talked last week about a vaccine ethics committee. The first meeting is going to be this afternoon, and they're going to look at some of these details and look at some of the strategies and sort of provide some input and kind of serve as an advisory role to me as we're making these decisions on how to go forward. But again, the current focus is getting the rest of the 1A folks that, for whatever reason, didn't get it before, and the teachers and all, and then focusing on the elders, and then we're going to start focusing on the Latino community now because of the much higher incidence of the disease and, you know, hospitalizations and things in those communities. So again, the main issue is supply, and the state has not gotten any better about guaranteeing more doses or looking beyond just a week at a time. So we're doing all we can do, which is one week at a time. When we get an allocation, we start preparing, and then when it actually arrives, we open up the appointments, and then we get it out within the next week. Sutter and Adventist were getting pretty good supplies before. It seems like their supplies are not as consistent, and so they were putting up some big stand-up vaccine sites, and I think those are having to slow down now because of supply issues as well. But they're a big part of why we've been able to get so many people vaccinated so quickly in the county. The state's really recommending that we focus on speed, getting it out as quickly as possible, which we are doing as well as we can. You know, there's no, we can't do it much faster. Like I said, we're going to run out by tomorrow afternoon if we don't get it, get some more. Fairness, so this whole issue of justice and health equity and disparity, and then preventing deaths. So really getting it into the populations that have the highest risk of dying if they get ill, especially with this variant coming through. There's increased concern about getting it into the arms of the people that are most at risk of dying. At this point, all the nursing home residents are vaccinated, so luckily that community is taken care of. We're going to be switching the models, so we've been working on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and then Fridays and Saturdays, Tuesday, Wednesday in Lakeport, Friday, Saturday in Clear Lake. We're going to switch that, and we're switching to a drive-through model. The numbers, now that we're doing the second doses and we're trying to do 250 a day or so, it's just the numbers are too big for these buildings. And luckily, we got through the first month with some of the nasty weather that we've had the last couple of weeks, which would have been a problem. And now we, so starting next Monday, we're going to be working on a whole different model, which is a drive-through. So people that have come and gotten them in the first month, the first couple of months here, and you're going to get your second dose, it's going to look different, it's going to be in a different location. So you just need to be paying attention. We're going to try to reach out to everybody and make contact, but if we can't get them through the phones or whatever, and you show up at the other site, we'll have a sign there that tells you where to go and what to do. But hopefully, we'll be able to get in touch with everybody and redirect them. They're still going to be in Lakeport, and Clear Lake is just going to be a different location. And again, if you don't have an appointment, don't show up, because we're only working with appointments. This is how we're trying to manage the expectations and trying to keep it moving smoothly. We've been, we've been really, really fortunate, you know. Anytime, I've been going over pretty much every day that it's been open, and, you know, anytime we're there, about half the people are paid staff, either public health staff or other folks from other parts of the government system that have been redirected to help us at this. But about half of them are volunteers, so whether it's the retired doctors or nurses that are given the shots, or folks helping with traffic control or registration, there's some real solid volunteers that have been helping us almost every day with the registration or with cleaning the chairs in between people. So, you know, I really want to give a shout out to all the help we've been getting with this, because with a small county like Lake, you know, we just don't have the staff, and the fact that the community just keeps showing up day after day. And it was cold some of those days, the last couple of weeks, and we had a little trouble with the heat one of the days, and, you know, no complaints, they just keep showing up and helping us out. So really, I think folks in the community ought to be very grateful of your neighbors for helping keeping this going, because we couldn't do it by ourselves. So again, the appointments, we have shifted it. So last week, we shifted it to where the appointments are public-facing, so if you go onto our website, you'll get a link, and if you qualify, which is if you're 65 or older, you qualify, then you can go, click on that link, and if there are appointments still available, you can make an appointment there. If it's something that you can't, you don't have internet access, or you don't have the ability to navigate through the internet, there is a phone number on the website that you can call, and some folks there will help you. If there are no appointments available, they don't have any secret stash of appointments, so don't, there's no value in calling them. If you try it online and you can't, and it says no appointments available, don't call them, because they don't have any either. It's basically just helping people who can't navigate the system. We are moving to a new software system probably in a little over a week, and that the state is mandating that we do, so again, just another one of the changes that comes down. That one will have its own call-in center, it will have bilingual people on it, and so there are going to be ways to do it, but it will be a similar process. We'll make the links available to the public. Public can go ahead and make the appointments till they're filled up, and then when you come to the site, we'll make sure you have an appointment, we'll check your ID, we'll make sure you actually qualify. If you don't qualify, we'll send you off, and until your time comes, and we'll make sure you're a resident of Lake County. So, you know, at this point, today and tomorrow are open, and once we get the supply in, Friday, Saturday, and next Monday should open up then as well. So hopefully, that comes in soon. So that's basically what I was hoping to talk about today. I mean, from a surge point of view, we're doing really well. It's very reassuring to see how things are going. I think the risk within the community is much, much lower than it was three or four weeks ago. The variant is, gives me a little bit of anxiety, but we'll just have to see how all that turns out at this point. The schools are, can start moving forward with the K through, K through five, I guess, can open with the current setup, as the schools have their plans together and are ready to do it. The vaccine rollout is going well, as well as can be expected, given the amount of vaccine we're getting. There is pressure on the state to get more, but the state doesn't seem to have any either, and so there you have it. And, you know, I really just want to encourage people to be as careful as possible now and not really just go back to normal life, because I think this variant could change the equation in the next couple of weeks. We'll be learning more as the information unfolds. And just the last thing to say is just, we, so we're going to do this presentation in front of the board of supervisors every Tuesday. We'll do a video presentation of a similar kind of report on Thursday that will be put on Facebook and I think YouTube as well. And then next Tuesday, there's not a regular board meeting, so we'll go ahead and do that. So basically, twice a week now, we'll do one of these video updates just to keep people going. Once it gets more stable and less changes every couple of days, we can probably go to less often, but at this point, that's the sort of the strategy. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Any comments or questions from supervisors? Supervisor Price, come.
I just want to thank you, Dr. Pace, for your help with the seniors that were having difficulty getting appointments through the senior center. I've heard of quite a few, not directly through me, but through other supervisors that were able to get their appointment, so I really want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott.
Yeah, no questions for me either today, just your team is absolutely rocking it. When I reach out to them, they get right back to me. You guys are doing an amazing job. Just keep up the good work.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I agree. You're doing a great job, doing what we can with the situation. And I just had a question about, so we're doing the 1,000, we received 1,000. Is Adventist and Sutter still receiving 1,000 as well, or is there, we don't know the number?
Yeah, I don't know the number, but my understanding is they're not getting nearly what they were getting before. And so we've been in conversation of we can share some, and we don't really have any extra right now. And so we're, so I think the numbers are going to decrease on how much vaccine we're actually getting out every week now, because they're getting less. They were getting a lot. I was surprised how much they were able to get the last couple of weeks, and I think what's happening is the corporate gets a certain amount, and then it gets redistributed amongst their, all their different hospitals, and I think, you know, they're not getting as much down in Lake County now.
Is the Mohawk, are they assisting the folks that are like, they can't, they're not using the internet? I have a couple, I have many people that called me about this, they're calling. When they're calling in, are the folks, are they helping them get signed up for their appointments, or is there another entity that we should be directing them to get help online?
There's another number. So it's, we basically are having, some of the folks at Social Services are really helping us to do this, and so they're the ones that are helping people get on there if they aren't able to do it. So, and they're particularly good with the elder folks, you know, and patient, helping them get on. So the number you can call is 993-4644.
Okay, thank you for that.
993-4644. And so this is not for people that can get online, and, you know, they're frustrated because they're not getting an appointment, but these folks will help people that do not have internet access or just can't really navigate those kind of online appointment situations, like, you know, my mother would never be able to do it. So it's, if you have a family member that can do it, that's great, they can do it. But if not, if they don't have that, then this would be the number to call.
Thank you for that. And I just have one last question, is in the numbers of people being vaccinated, is this a collaborative amongst hospitals, county, and tribal health? Are those their numbers as well?
These are the numbers from the state of everybody with a Lake County residence that's been vaccinated.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor, Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, you know, Dr. Pace, I just want to, you know, the same as you did, all the volunteers, your department and everything, I know this is a challenge from the supply end, but I do just want to say thank you very much. I know after last week's call, we did get some seniors that probably reached out to every one of the supervisors, but I know I had a few folks that we passed on. I know that getting the information out there has been, you know, as efficient as possible, but I do want to just say thank you to you and all the volunteers working through this situation. Making sure that as the change is happening, I know you talked about them today, the teacher drive-through and some other stuff that's going to be happening, just want to make sure we get it out to the communities and communicate that very well. I know you've done that, and just continue down that path. And also wanted to just say that I did get reached out by a couple of seniors that were able to go get their appointments at the senior center in Clear Lake, and just they passed on to me that they wanted to thank you for the experience they had. They weren't sure in this environment that we've been going through all this time, but they felt safe and they were able to get through it. So I just wanted to pass that on to you and all the volunteers that are doing the shots when you're able to get them done. We understand there is a challenge, probably the next four to eight weeks, the supply issue is going to hopefully smooth out. We'll continue to push from our end, but just for folks to be as patient as possible and continue to reach out to us, and we'll continue to try and move in a positive direction for our community. So thank you, Dr. Pace, and all the volunteers that have worked on this for the past 10 months.
Thank you, Supervisor. So I wanted to talk real quick about schools. I know it's not within our own jurisdiction, but I know and feel and understand the impacts that schools being closed and being virtual has had on our students and our families. Our families, some are forced to stay home because they have young children that they can't leave alone at home, meaning that they've had to drop their jobs, become unemployed. We're seeing the statistics, unfortunately, coming out for that, that women are being absolutely more impacted than anyone else by this. The unemployment, just for last month, 80% of all unemployment was for women. That is not a positive note for what we're doing. Obviously, there's inequity that still exists within our rules and within our society, and it's showing its ugly head with all of the things that we're doing. And there's good intentions, but the outcomes are still very much the same as in the past. Also, there's two sides that are hesitant to go back to school. I find that a large majority are more educated and middle-class who have the ability and capability to continue doing things at home, helping their children at home, but it's hard to teach your child algebra if you don't know algebra. It's hard to teach your child to read if you don't know how to read. And those things are very important to make sure that we don't leave our children behind. Already, our numbers were not looking great in our communities, and I've spoken to some of our educators and some of our superintendents, and it does not look good as far as what's happening now. We are losing more people, 15 and up, that possibly will never go back to school, and that is a scary situation to think how that will impact us in the future. Yes, I know that there's impacts of potential deaths, but there will be some long-term effects to our communities and to our economy because of some of the things that are happening right now. And on the other side, you have those who have intergenerational houses who are also worried about going back to school, because now you're going, you're sending your kid back to school, and you have a grandparent and parent and uncles and others who are living all in the same household, which creates other complications. So none of this is easy, but we have to find a way, and I'm just going to say it as an individual, not as the board, but as an individual father, as an individual supervisor and a person in the community, I am absolutely in favor of... I am absolutely in favor of reopening our schools and providing the safety measures necessary for our children to go back. Um, and so anything that I can do, uh, I've already reached out to many of the educators out there, anything that I can do to help. Uh, because there 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 are some unseen problems that I think we take a lot for granted, such as internet. Um, and and for instance, we just said, uh, if you don't have internet, you can reach a number, but we finally got to saying the number. It's because we that's how much we take it for granted, that it's just that easily to access those things. So I appreciate that we gave the number. Uh, but there are some people in our community that really have struggles on accessing some of these things that other people have absolutely simplest of accesses, uh, to it. Um, I I am, um, I I there's some unknowns as to what's gonna come in the next couple of weeks. The state has been discussing about changing the tiered system. My guess is that will be a benefit to allowing schools to open. I think that's what's gonna come down the pike. Uh, but there is nothing set in stone, other than conversations have been had, uh, as of late for the tiers to be changed once again. Um, and it's all a learning process. Everything was, uh, done and and again, good intentions. Uh, but we're we're learning more and more as to what the overall impacts are on the decisions that have been made. And I think that those will those will be coming down. Um, preschools and childcare, uh, I wanted to bring this up in the sense that, yes, they have been active throughout this whole time. Yes, there's been minimal. Uh, I don't have the exact data, but I haven't heard of any large outbreaks happening at childcare or daycare areas or preschools. Um, but at the same time, I would suggest that possibly some parents are concerned about bringing their children, uh, to these daycares or preschools, which prohibits them from going back to work. Uh, and so there there there's a correlation between getting our people back to work and getting our kids back to school that, uh, in my opinion, is not a chicken or egg theory. It's it's literally the children have to have a place to go before we can get parents back, uh, to the workplace. And so I think that, um, reviewing that and trying to figure out when and how we can get to those, uh, sectors is is going to be important. Um, the, I'm glad to hear that we're getting more vaccines. Uh, we've been working on that. We've been told that it was coming. And I'm glad that it's not, uh, wasn't just words, that we are seeing it in action. A thousand is great. I sure hope that we get that full amount that was, uh, requested. Um, and I'm still concerned about the, um, the disconnected or those that are concerned about not taking the vaccine. Can't force them to do it, uh, but I'm I'm concerned about what that future looks like. I just had a, uh, conversation with tribal health. I I wanted to get a little bit more information, um, just to better understand their process, who their clientele are. Uh, from what I understand, about, I don't know, 75 to 80% um, of, uh, all Native Americans in the county are being seen by tribal health. So it's definitely not all, and hopefully they have another, uh, primary care provider outside of tribal health. But it was something like 25% are agreeing to take the vaccine. And I know that historically, we have an issue, uh, with the trust of healthcare, um, when it comes to minorities, which is an unfortunate situation that we're seeing again, uh, pop up. And 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 so we have to figure out, I know that we have, uh, Kono Ketai, uh, that is working on this. And I hope that they're not just working on the decreasing of cases, but also working on, um, informing, uh, that population on the vaccine, uh, the benefits, uh, and just the the facts of the vaccine. Uh, because I think that that number is is dismal. And if it's possible to increase through positive messaging and factual messaging, uh, that maybe that can change. But I I I'm going to make a guess that we're gonna possibly see the same situation when it comes to our Latino communities. Uh, and so hopefully, uh, LCOE, who has the contract with the Latino communities, can do that same level of work, not just about decreasing our cases, but also increasing, uh, the trust in in the vaccine as well. Um, I I I do appreciate the hard work that's going into that. I appreciate that we're gonna go to an outdoor, uh, uh, drive-through. Uh, I'm I'm taking it because I haven't been informed on the specifics of it, that they go through, get the shot and then park for 15, 20 minutes. And then eventually they leave once, uh, we we've decided that there's been no reaction or anything like that. I see, uh, Dr. Pace nodding, so that seems to be the case. Because I know we were worried about that at first, uh, because we did speak about doing a drive-through, uh, model at the very beginning, but then went with the, uh, brick and mortar. Um, but I I do want to say, uh, thank you to those who are running the senior centers. Uh, there's been a lot of thank yous for those dealing with the vaccines, but I know the senior centers have also been, uh, communicating with all of their, um, folks that they support through their programs. I know I, uh, like all of us, got contacted by seniors or others, uh, advocating for seniors, uh, contacted the, uh, senior center, and, uh, they were on the list. They're just, they they have a lot of people to call and they just hadn't gotten to some of those people already, but they did, uh, in a very short time. So definitely want to show appreciation for those who are working at the senior centers, uh, who are doing a program that they never thought that they would probably be, uh, doing and helping out with, but happy that they're there, uh, to provide that assistance. So I'll I'll stop right there, but I'm really, uh, hoping that we'll see something coming from the state with a new, uh, update on the tiers and, uh, see what that does to us and how that can help us move forward. Any further comments or questions? Supervisor Scott.
Um, you made a comment about schools. I think people need to be making sure that they are paying attention to their school board meetings. So make sure you're getting online, finding out when your local school board meeting, uh, will be meeting, so you can, um, have your voice heard, um, when it comes to your children. I know Lakeport Unified will be meeting this Thursday at 6 o'clock, um, via Zoom. So make sure that you're you're there and, um, having your voice heard.
Okay, thank you for that. Seeing, uh, no other supervisor with comments, let's go ahead.
One, one, supervisor, uh, Mr. Chair, I one last comment. I just, uh, want to bring up, uh, Dr. Pace, so we, um, I did talk to you about this, uh, earlier in the week, but, um, also wanted to, I know we talk about, uh, you know, all of our, um, ethnic groups and everybody, we're looking at the disparities, but also want to bring up, you know, and hopefully we'll see some changes in, uh, our disabled, uh, folks in the county. You know, I know there are a lot of folks and have some concerns that, uh, folks are have disabled folks in their house. They were, uh, you know, either a teacher, they were able to get vaccinated, but then they have someone who's vulnerable in the home that they'll be coming home to. So hopefully that's taken into consideration when they kind of revamp, uh, this situation because ultimately we want those, uh, educators to be able to go to work and not have to worry about bringing something home to maybe a disabled family member or somebody else. So I know it's still a challenge. It all comes down to supply. Uh, but hopefully, and when we're looking at the tiers, our disabled community in Lake County is, um, taken in consideration when we work that through. So and hopefully throughout the state also, not just Lake County, but, um, I did want to mention that, uh, that there are all kinds of issues that are constantly popping up. But, um, those are, uh, folks that can't speak for themselves or advocate. We need to be always moving forward with that, uh, from the board level. So thank you very much for at least hearing that and, uh, taking that in consideration.
Yeah, if I could Supervisor, just to update on that, uh, there's been a few changes. So the state, um, th- they gave some conflicting, uh, advice on how to deal with in-home caregivers, uh, that with people that were family members. So we really focused on folks that were providing care in multiple households so that they wouldn't be spreading the the virus around. But the state just came out, I don't know, a few days ago, with some new guidance that really encouraged, uh, um, vaccination of of family members who are caring for disabled folks. And they also, uh, they had specific categories. And so if people go on the web, on the state website, the CDPH website, they list which illnesses they feel like are people are at higher risk from having real problems, uh, with the COVID. And so, you know, they can go on that and probably the best way to do it is to get a note or something from the provider and let us know and we can help them get that. The other thing is, is that the disabled community, so the people that are not 65 and older, so under 65, but that have, uh, different kinds of chronic medical illnesses, uh, they need to be 18 or over, so between 18 and 64, and to have certain medical illnesses, they're gonna be in the next grouping after some of these essential workers we're talking about. This is the way the state's kind of rolling it out. And, um, so, you know, it's kind of confusing and they're they're sort of moving it around a little bit, but probably in then, you know, maybe within a month or so, we'll be able to start really approaching those folks. It just depends on supply.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pace, for that clarification. Thank you.
Now, thank you both. That's an important one to bring up. And in fact, I forgot to mention that the, uh, the tiers overall have changed for, uh, the state. If you look at the state covid19.ca.gov/vaccines, uh, they've gotten rid of a lot of the details. Once you get past the 65 plus, uh, now it just, uh, basically says age, uh, after that. And so there's definitely some updates that have been coming, uh, down the pike. And as Dr. Pace alluded, uh, some of those changes as well. Um, also wanted to mention, I'm not sure if I mentioned it last week, but in my conversation with the state, the reason that there's a disparity between certain counties getting more vaccines than us as far as percentage of population is due to the fact that it was based on skilled nurse facility or or, um, senior home facilities where they needed to be provided care, uh, how many of those people did we have in our population and the amount of healthcare workers that you had in your population. And so obviously, there would be certain areas where there's universities, where basically where we're sending our folks to get healthcare is most likely where they're gonna get a little bit more because they obviously have more healthcare workers. However, once that part of the state is done, then it's gonna be based on age groups as far as what we receive next. And because we have the largest percentage of population of 65 plus, we would be seeing an increase in the amount of doses that we would receive compared to some other areas that might see a decrease. Uh, so just kind of wanted to relay some of the information that I learned from the state. Um, they they have a formula, uh, just doesn't always fit what exactly we want, but at least that now i- i- we can understand what their what their reasoning is, and it's always good to have that. Nothing further from anyone else. Uh, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room, Jake, and we're gonna start with, uh, Susan Cronus, who's had her hand up and waiting patiently for a while.
Oh. Um, am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have, uh, three questions, um, which is unusual, just three for an attorney. But anyway, uh, who is the chair of the Ethics Committee? Um, how do, what is their contact information? And is it a public meeting?
Gary, would you like me to respond to that?
Sure, that'd be great.
So the Ethics Committee is just in the process of being, uh, formulated. Its first meeting is today, so we don't have the answers to those questions yet.
Uh, who is on the committee?
Uh, I, we're going to meet with the committee first and discuss with them how what their process will be and whether or not they want their identities known or prefer to operate confidentially.
Okay, and when when will that information come out after the, uh, meeting today?
Well, as I said, it meets today, so as soon as there is more to know, we will let you know.
Okay, and how will that come out?
Susan, I don't know the answers to these questions. With the committee hasn't met yet. We're going to meet with the committee and make those decisions today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And Jake, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, check to see if there's any further comments from the public in the Zoom room.
All right, I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Good morning. This is Bart Levinson. Yes, I was going to ask the same question about the Ethics Committee. Um, uh, how will the public, uh, be able to participate? So I look forward to hearing that answer. Uh, also, I wanted to, um, ask Dr. Pace, uh, when Sarah was giving the statistics in her reports, she was saying, as you can see, and I just wanted to note that some of the participants in your meetings, uh, uh, now by Zoom are on phone and can't see, uh, the graphs that are being presented. So if Sarah could please also say the numbers. And where, Dr. Pace, you said, uh, the public, uh, should look to, uh, your Tuesday Board of Supervisors presentation and a video on Thursday. Could you please be more specific, uh, about, uh, where exactly the public should look for the video on Thursday and where those who don't have access to a computer should be chucking in?
Matthew, could you help with that?
Yes, uh, as of right now, the videos are available on the Public Health Lake County Facebook page and also the County of Lake Facebook page. Uh, they're recorded on Thursday afternoons and then edited by our videographer and published as soon as possible thereafter. So usually they'll show up sometime late on Thursday evening. Uh, so some people will see them for the first time on Friday morning. Uh, we, uh, we have heard from our librarian that they have, um, Chrome Chromebooks available that can be checked out for periods of three hours. Uh, so that's applicable for the, um, you know, Board of Supervisors meetings on Thursdays and would also be possible for people to go to the libraries and and be able to access, uh, those update videos. And and I would definitely recommend going on Friday morning if you're wanting to access it via one of those meetings.
And I I need to, I need to interrupt real quick, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Matthew. Uh, we need to just take a quick little break. We've lost our county council, and I do not want to keep a meeting going without county council, uh, to to check in. Uh, I do not want you to go away, Matthew. I want you to finish. Uh, I I don't need to interrupt.
Jake, can you alert me as soon as Anita rejoins the room? Um, and so, Mr. Chair, you want to take a three-minute break or something like that?
I do see her on the phone. Is she available on the phone?
Yeah, I do see her here. I'm checking in with that. Um, I'm sending a mute request. See what we have here. And I apologize to everyone for this. But Ms. Grant keeps us out of trouble. Or maybe better to say, she keeps us in line.
That's her goal anyway.
Yes. So I say we just take an an official break. I apologize again for the interruption. That way we can, uh, leave Jake and to try and figure out how to get this resolved, and we can get Ms. Grant back. So let's go ahead and come back together at 10 a.m. Okay, we have 10 a.m. And just gonna check Ms. Grant, we still have you with us?
Uh, Anita, if you.
Hello?
There you are.
There you go.
Yes, I I'm I'm not appearing the way I normally do, so I had to come in as a participant. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and continue. We had Matthew responding to a public comment. I again apologize for the interruption, but if we can either start over with your response or continue from where you left off, that would be great.
Hi, yes, this is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. So I'll just recap. As we had, um, someone ask how they could watch the Thursday COVID-19 update videos, and those are called, uh, COVID-19 Emergency Operations Situational Update Videos produced by Dr. Pace. Uh, those are recorded on Thursday afternoons and posted sometime late Thursday evening. Um, so they can be accessed usually Thursday evenings via the Public Health Lake County Facebook page and the County of Lake Facebook page. And they're also posted to the County of Lake YouTube channel. Uh, the YouTube channel has the benefit of closed captioning functionality. And there is also usually after a period of time, auto translation features available on that channel. So it's really been a a good option for a lot of people. Uh, certainly, we are concerned that, um, some do not have internet access. And our librarian has, uh, been generous to let us know that there are a limited number of Chromebooks that are available at. are available at the Lake County Library locations in Lakeport and Clear Lake. So the, those libraries both open at 10:00 AM on Fridays and you can check out a Chromebook for a period of three hours. The Lakeport Library Branch can be reached at 707-263-8817. And the Clear Lake location can be reached at 707-994-5115. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I, I wanted to respond to two of the questions. And this has been brought up about the Ethics Committee. My opinion of the Ethics Committee is that the committee members themselves remain anonymous because of the potential for lobbying and advocacy, which is exactly the type of pressures we're trying to get away from and move towards just what makes logical sense. The results and the decisions made at the committee needs to be made public. And again, that's my opinion on what I would like to see out of it because the, the conversation that the Ethics Committee came out of, the pressures that had already been impacting the vaccination rollout. And how do we ensure that we're, we're looking at a very fair and equitable way to make sure that we're, we're doing what's right? And so that's again, my opinion on that and, and open that up for further discussion with the board, but just wanted to speak on it. I see Ms. Hutchinson came on, so might have a comment on that.
Yes. So today we would be discussing with the committee its process. And what Dr. Pace and I had envisioned originally is that requests for consideration, you know, for reprioritization of the plan for rollout of the vaccines would come through Dr. Pace and be given to the committee to ponder and make a recommendation. We were not envisioning that the committee would receive requests from any outside source or county department or what have you, because it would just, it would, it would be never-ending. So, but when Dr. Pace is facing those questions, it, it was our vision that, that he would forward those concerns to the committee. But again, having not had any level of conversation with the committee yet, we want to get their input on how they believe it should work.
Thank you very much for that. Because I had brought something up, anyone from the supervisors want to comment on this or shall we move on in public comment? Okay. Jake, let's make sure the Zoom room is open and available for further public comment.
I've sent an additional unmute request out to the Zoom room floor.
Thank you, Jake.
Good morning. This is Bart Levinson again, continuing with the question that I asked previously. The question is to Carol Hutchinson, so you expect the public to communicate to Dr. Pace anything that we would like expressed to the Ethics Committee? Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, do you want me to respond?
Please.
I, I think the, the message everyone needs to get here is the committee hasn't met yet and these details will be worked out with the committee.
And I would say that at this moment in time, reach out to your supervisors and talk to us at this moment in time. Ms. Fulton, you were next.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate this discussion. And I did send a question to Anita, but now I'll give it to the whole group. Since this committee is being formed under the authority of the Board of Supervisors, is it truly legal to have the members of the committee?
Ms. Fulton, I'd like to correct you that this is not under the Board of Supervisors. It's not a committee created by us or by the chair. It is a committee created by our Public Health Officer who is in charge of this emergency.
Uh, thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. However, with all due respect, the umbrella organization is the Board of Supervisors and the County Health Department falls under that umbrella. So my question remains, how can any county affiliated committee have members whose identity is not made public? I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the concept that was put forth at all, but I'm wondering if in fact, and this I'm sure Anita will weigh in on, but how could any committee formed under the umbrella of the Board of Supervisors be considered a secret committee? Thank you.
And I may have made a mistake and opened my mouth by stating my opinion because that may not actually be the fact. And I'm sure that Anita will, will let us know. And with the meeting happening later today, that more information will be provided.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is Anita. I, I don't quite understand the, ostensibly any, any committee, your board has individual committees that help you with, with various limited issues. Here it's my understanding that Dr. Pace wanted the assistance of, of a group for a very limited purpose to review certain things. The efficacy of the group depending upon what the governor later says in terms of priorities may or may not even have much significance, but if it does, this is a, a group that your board wasn't, wasn't asked to create, wasn't asked to approve. It's not created under your umbrella. It is created, I believe, at least that was the intention and perhaps, perhaps that needs to be made more clear, that this is part of Dr. Pace's ongoing efforts to, to improve the efficacy and efficiency of the entire vaccination process in his role as Public Health Officer. I'm not quite sure what the reason for not allowing the identity of the members. There may be reasons, I'm just not aware of them. I, I think that the last meeting, this was just broached as something that may happen. It sounds as if there's a great deal more in terms of how this is going to gel out, but I don't believe that this was technically created under your umbrella any more than you, you have a supervisor who has a blue collar committee that wasn't created under your board's umbrella. You have, you have another group that Dr. Pace put together that's also, that has disparate people that he created that was not part of your board's creation or even suggestion. So I believe that's how it's operating here, but if my facts are wrong, then of course my opinion would change.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, any further public comments?
I've sent another unmute request out to the Zoom room floor to check.
One last question, please. So the, for people who do not have computer access, the new number that Dr. Pace presented today, 993-4644, is that the number of social services? Is that the number that the public now should know to call if they need information about the vaccine and don't have a computer?
Uh, yeah, thanks for that question. The number, if people need information about the vaccine, they should call 211. That's the first step because that's where the, the basic information that we're giving out is. If they need other information about the vaccine or vaccination possibilities or things like that, they should call the MOOC line, which is 263-1874. The number that you mentioned, 993-4644, is specifically for people that qualify for the vaccine, so 65 and older, who need an appointment, but they can't deal with the computer. So those are generally, I mean, older folks that don't have computers or don't have the wherewithal to kind of navigate through an online appointment strategy. These folks will help them make an appointment. So it's a very specific number and it's, it's a, some social service employees are really helping us out by doing this, so we'd appreciate it if people don't overwhelm them with kind of other calls or because you're upset because there's no vaccine available or you want to get on the Ethics Committee or whatever. The question is, they don't really have control over that. What they're really doing is helping us support the senior community who would not be able to get an appointment otherwise because of internet limitations.
Thank you, Dr. Pace.
Thank you. And would it be possible, Dr. Pace, for you to put out a statement in the local press just saying exactly what you just said so that it's more widely available?
Sure. Yeah, we'll do a press release probably tomorrow. I'm pretty sure that went out last week as well, some version of that, but it sounds like there's still some confusion, so we'll, we'll do that again this week. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and...
Thank you.
Agree that that press release did go out, providing all the different ways that you can get an appointment, both for testing and vaccinations. Okay. Jake, any further public comment in the Zoom room?
And I followed up with a additional request to unmute.
Thank you.
Julie Colfax, can you hear me?
Yes, Julie.
Um, I am curious, being 12 months into this pandemic, I know we've looked repeatedly at the number of deaths and the positivity rate from the COVID virus itself. I'm curious to know if public health and/or other providers have considered the dramatic impact the situation has had on mental health and even the death toll from an increase in suicide rates that's happened because of the changes in lifestyle. And taking that information into account when we talk about choices being made based on virus positivity, that there are sometimes other consequences of the disease as well that dramatically affect both our schools and our work and our community life.
And if you'd like, Dr. Pace, I can respond to that or if you wanted to respond to that?
Oh, sure. No, I'm happy to respond to it. Yeah, I mean, you bring up really important points. We consider that all the time. It's a definitely a risk benefit, a kind of balancing act that we're working with all the time. Again, you know, there's the, the state regulations about what's allowed to be open and what's not allowed to be open, which we are following. And there's a lot of thought that goes into that. And then there's the reality on the ground. So like right now, for example, the elementary schools are able to be open and, but there's a whole issue with that because once they open, then they start having to deal with positive cases and positive teachers and all that. And so it's, it's not just a simple fact of restrictions, remove restrictions or, you know, even in the areas, not so much here right now, but in other parts of the country when the restrictions on restaurants and bars are not, are lifted, people are often are reluctant to go back because of the concerns about the virus transmission and everything. So the, we're thinking about that all the time. We're doing what we can. That's where the hope is that the vaccine getting out is going to help us get back to a more normal lifestyle. So the other impacts of, I mean, I agree with Supervisor Sabatier, the school, the schools being closed for this long are, are really problematic for society and I think a lot of kids are gonna suffer from that, that it's going to be very, very difficult. And, but again, you know, all fall, the schools were able to be open. They just, they didn't feel safe. There was issues with getting all the staff comfortable and getting the, the protections in place to, to prevent significant outbreaks was what was going on. And so now we're moving into another phase where we're really trying to put the support in place to get, to get the schools to be able to open as soon as possible. But you're absolutely right. And I think we're going to be kind of calculating the cost of this in the coming months and years that's going to be a lot bigger than we ever realized in terms of mental health and in terms of substance abuse and domestic violence and all kinds of things.
Thank you very much for that answer.
Thank you.
I, I would love to actually have some information in some of your reports as well about those numbers as well, about symptomology, we're seeing increased maybe referrals for behavioral health services and/or, you know, what does the suicide rate increase look like?
Okay. We do have Director Metcalfe here. It looks like he unmuted in order to respond as well to this. He would definitely be the main source of information for that.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalfe. I'm the Director of the Behavioral Health Services Department. And to respond to what Julie was mentioning, yes, we are definitely seeing an increased need not only in mental health services, but substance use disorder services as well. And statewide, nationwide studies are showing and proving that because of the pandemic, there is, there is an increase in anxiety, depression, post-traumatic stress syndrome. There are all sorts of mental illnesses related to this pandemic and we are, we're doing the best we can to respond. But it's, it's problematic because of our staffing issues and what have you. But yes, it's, this is a real thing and our department is certainly significantly impacted by it.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalfe. I, I will add that you said something about deaths. We've actually had the lowest death count in quite a long time, according to California Department of Public Health. We had 659 in the year 2020 and the lowest before that was 2014 was 770. That's 100 more than what we experienced. And I think that shutting down stopped a whole lot of other things like car accidents and other incidents that we would typically see that we're starting to see again because a lot of people are, are going back to their normal activities, which, you know, we've had some very unfortunate incidents in the, in the recent past here. But at the same time, there is definitely, I know a statistic that Director Metcalfe provided to me was a 500% increase in substance abuse calls to his department. So there definitely is an outlying impact that may not show up on, on our own statistics at all times, but I appreciate the, the comment. And it's being discussed as well, so I appreciate that. Supervisor Pace, go.
I think we all recognize that this is really a difficult time. It's a difficult time for our families. It's a difficult time for all of us. There's really nothing easy about this. We had a very close personal friend commit suicide a few months ago because of this pandemic and because of mental illness and added anxiety. It's very difficult and, you know, we are all in this together, but, you know, it, it's helpful to bring this up and to highlight, you know, the mental health, behavioral health, substance abuse. All of these things are part of, you know, what we're dealing with together.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any further public comments?
Mr. Chair, can I just add one thing? I got one of the phone numbers wrong. So the MOOC line, I, I transposed a couple of the numbers. It's 263-8174. I said 1874, so it's 263-8174. So I just want to correct that. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, Jake, I'm taking it that that was out there for anyone to unmute and ask a question? Is that correct?
Yes, I did follow up with an additional unmute request.
Okay. So it looks like we are done with public comment, bringing it back to the board. Any further comments before we finish this item?
Yes, I have a comment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're done with public comment at this moment in time?
Thank you.
And since you had a chance, I, we definitely did not skip you accidentally. If you have any further questions, please either email Public Health or email your supervisor and we'll make sure to get you an answer to that question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from our supervisors? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to, thank you very much, Dr. Pace. Appreciate your time and your work.